Six o'clock. How are we doing, Westboro TV? Okay, great. Our agenda for tonight is a call to order, superintendent's update, W H S journalism and W T V discussion, presentation, I think. Yep. Grant for robotics program, discussion of items, the Z E V policy document, as well as the policy comparison, discussion of the fiscal 26 warrant articles and budget summit, 25, 26 school calendar, version one through three. Citizens requests, school committee reports and action items. So we'll deal with all those. If all those who can, please rise for the pledge.
... by the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ellison, please.
All right. First of all, I just wanted to acknowledge our student representative Reagan Sullivan is off tonight, so we won't have a student update for you. We wish her speedy recovery, so she's out sick. I wanted to say one note before we kind of dive into the printed agenda, which is I had the chance, and I saw Sarah there as well, to attend the M L K Day event on Monday, which was fantastic. It's a collaborative event between the public schools, Westboro Connects, the Interfaith Council, and am I missing anybody else, Daniel? I think those are the big players. I think those are it. Really, an extraordinary chance for people to come together and honor both the sort of legacy and the commitment of Dr. King to uphold the ideals of a country and think about, for all community members, to think about sort of our own commitments and what do we want to bring forward. In addition to a keynote speaker and a wonderful sort of student performance and a student speaker, we had a chance to really talk with other members of the community about kind of different things going on and what we thought about them. So it was very interactive. I very much enjoyed it. Thank you to Daniel, who is a big part of the planning team, and to everyone involved in pulling the event together. It was really exceptional. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Martin and Karen Henderson, who are going to talk to us a little bit about our collaborative program with Westboro TV around student journalism.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Karen Henderson. I am the general manager at Westboro TV, a position I've held for almost 11 years now. And before that, I did about seven years sitting over there on your side of the desk on school committee. So thanks for having us this evening.
Hi, and I'm Christopher Martin. I'm the director of fine arts, also here for 11 years. I'm also the school committee's appointed member of the board of directors for Westboro TV and their liaison between the schools. So tonight, we wanted to have an opportunity to speak with you. The Massachusetts curriculum frameworks recently transitioned broadcast journalism into the media arts, which transferred it to the fine arts department. So that collaboration is pretty new. This is year two, and we're excited about the collaboration we've been doing. And we just wanted to share what some of that has looked like, because we haven't had the opportunity to do that. So before we dive too deep.
Right. Before we get into the education piece, I thought it might be kind of helpful just to have an overview of Westboro TV in general, what we do in the town. So rather than us talk about that, we're going to go to video number one, because we really do our talking through video. So let's take a look at that. Thank you, Daniel.
By the way, welcome back.
Thank you.
Welcome to Westboro TV. Located at 33 West Main Street, right in the heart of downtown, our nonprofit public access station is committed to producing high-quality content by, about, and for the community of Westboro. While not a town department, Westboro TV works hand in hand with the local government to foster community awareness and engagement. Our programming encompasses three categories: public, education, and government, all of which help create a portrait of life in Westboro. Our live and archived coverage of government meetings provides accessibility and transparency in government. Through our live broadcasts, both on television and online, citizens can stay informed to the minute and even make plans to attend certain line items that are important to them, promoting civic engagement among residents. In 2023, we covered over 170 government meetings totaling over 300 hours. It is through this intensive coverage that we amplify the voices of not just our local officials and boards, but those of our citizens as well. Beyond government, Westboro TV routinely highlights the important milestones and achievements of our Westboro students. Things like live sports, concerts, plays, and ceremonies showcase the amazing work done in our schools to parents and families who may not be able to attend every event. In addition to filming these moments, Westboro TV is in a unique position of working with the high school's journalism program in person to give them hands-on experience with professional equipment. As we cover these educational pieces year by year, we create a living archive of our town's children growing and learning in real time. The final section is the public arm of our operation. Here, we spotlight community events, local figures, and anything of general town interest. In-house, we feature a three-camera studio and a podcast setup that is open to all residents to utilize and share their stories. Westboro TV is a small team, working all hours of the day to bring residents together through our shared town pride. Last year, between the three branches of our work, we created nearly 800 pieces of exclusive video content, all free to watch for anyone with cable or internet. We hope that this video has given you an appreciation for the important work of our local access television station. We love the work that we do in Westboro to help connect and engage people and foster that distinct sense of community Westboro prides itself on. Check us out on cable TV, westbrotv.org, and on our YouTube to keep up to date on all things Westboro.
Great. So that gives you kind of a good idea of the broad overview of services that we provide. You'll kind of hear in that video, we talked about P E G. They often call it P E G programming, Public Education and Government. Tonight, we're going to focus on education, which, don't tell the others, but is my favorite branch of the work we do. And I think it's important for you all to know, we kind of touched on it, but across the district, K through 12 and the borough, we cover events, including fine arts, whether it's concerts, or plays, or shows, and then high school sports. Many of those are live broadcast and recorded for playback on TV and online on YouTube, on our YouTube channel, and we hear from parents and grandparents and coaches and teachers and students themselves, who are so grateful that friends and family can tune into those kind of across the country, but even beyond that. You know, we had a band from Germany visit earlier this fall, and we had hundreds of people watching from Germany to see their band over here on TV, which was really neat, something they don't really get a chance to do. So that was, that was great. But there's just so many of those stories where you'll hear, you know, anecdotally from people who, you know, will see a friend who's in a hotel in Dallas watching a soccer game, that they're away on work, but they're still able to watch that. And I just think that connection between students and people kind of everywhere is such a gift that we, that we're able to give people. And then in addition to those events, when given the opportunity, we work with faculty on kind of longer projects where we can really showcase the teaching and learning that goes on in the district. So there's so many things we've done over the years, but you know, I think earlier this year, you might have had some sixth-grade teachers in talking about an Audubon unit they had done, and we worked closely with them to follow them through that unit so people could really see that from beginning, middle, to end. We have done a series for the elementary schools. It's kind of a Westboro flyover that shows them landmarks from throughout town that the third graders can see with kind of like the bird flying and then seeing and getting close-ups with all our drone footage of important town locations. We worked with the district staff this year to create a screens, back-to-school video about screens for parents that was shown to the Mill Pond parents. That was very helpful to them. And in studio, you know, we've done the superintendent spotlight before, and certainly Superintendent Porters and I have had conversations about how she might be able to utilize, now that she's been going here, utilize some of the Westboro TV services. So we're open to that as well. So those are just a few examples of how we try to assist in showcasing the learning that's going on across the district.
So what the public usually sees is that outward-facing product from Westboro TV, but what a lot of people don't see is all the work that they're doing with our students each and every day. Journalism program begins at the high school. There's an entry-level Journalism One class where they learn about media bias and ethics and writing articles for both the school newspaper and learning how to put together packages. That transitions into a Journalism Two class, which is learning how to put together bigger packages and tell a story through broadcast, which then leads into our Advanced Journalism, which are putting together packages weekly and bi-weekly through the community and for the schools. So we would like to share a little bit about what our students are doing right from their mouths, rather than hearing us talk, and you can learn a little bit more about our programming and our partnership. Daniel, if you'll do the school committee one with the students, please. Thank you.
Good morning, W H S. This is Bram Lieberman.
And Abby Northrup reporting for the Lobby Observer.
As we approach the end of the year, it's time to look back and celebrate everything we've achieved and experienced together in these first few months of school.
That's right, Bram. Let's head back to the start. The class of 2025 kicked off this year by running down east.
We're very fortunate to have the partnership that we have with Westboro TV. The students get a lot of good stuff from us here in terms of the writing side of things, but they have things at Westboro TV that we can't really offer here in our space, especially when it comes to equipment, technology, expertise of their staff. You know, we're English teachers, but we're not professional editors or professional videographers. So it's really special for them to have that kind of a connection.
So the thing that makes journalism unique from any other course is that it's basically an internship as a class. You can come to Westboro TV and make broadcasts, help with the bi-weekly newsreel, work to add to the lobby of social media feeds. You have so much liberty in the stuff that you make. Everyone has a place in journalism and do what they're passionate about.
This is a class, and I think also a profession, where you really can't do it alone. You have to work with other people to get the end product that you want. And they get to kind of gain this perspective that the world is a little bit bigger than their own lives or what we do in a classroom. And as a teacher, that's really rewarding for me.
Well, I just think every, every day is, is fun, because you're going out in the world. So I've gotten to like, I went with a couple of my friends to watch a movie, to write a review on that. So there's always an opportunity to do something new and exciting and go on an adventure.
I had wrote and published an article on mental health. And then from there, I actually came to Westboro TV and was interviewed on the 01581 Let's Talk Show. And again, because I had those broadcasting skills, I was able to confidently come in here as a sophomore in high school and be interviewed about that. So that's really awesome.
My favorite thing that I've worked on personally was a broadcast that we did earlier this year in Advanced Journalism called the Hidden Gems Broadcast, where we went around the town of Westboro to small businesses and highlighted what makes them stand out and what makes them special. After the broadcast came out, actually, we were told by our journalism teacher that other small businesses in Westboro had reached out to her, saying like, "We want to be the next Hidden Gems Broadcast." So that was really like satisfying for us. And we felt like we did, you know, we did some good in the community. I'd say the skills that being in journalism has helped me develop the most is communication easily.
The confidence, the ability to go out of your comfort zone, speak up and advocate for yourself.
You know, if I ever have a job interview now, I go into it feeling really confident because of all the experience that I've had in journalism interviewing.
But then also in the leadership area, I think I've really improved being in Advanced Journalism, because there's always something to be done, and you get to like be an executive producer, you get to anchor, like there's always something that you can like step up and, and try, and it's a lot of fun.
The communication skills that you develop, the creativity, all these things that come with working with the people at Westboro TV are things that aren't just in the world of journalism. They bleed into everyday life. It helps you for everything to come.
I know that a lot of students take their journalism skills into the future in college and in different careers. Some like reporting and producing and writing, but also careers in marketing and communications. It's really satisfying to see what they do with what they learn here.
Westboro TV and journalism has helped me immensely in my college experiences. I've learned great communication skills that I've taken with me and joined professional business clubs in college, where you're talking to clients and engaging with people you never thought you would. And also, just more practically, I do some broadcasting for Michigan Sports. And the experience that I've learned behind the scenes of Westboro TV has been integral to everything that I do in college.
Journalism was my favorite class that I ever took at Westboro High School. It allowed me to write about and cover whatever I wanted to write about. So I covered high school sports and the Red Sox, which is my favorite team. And it actually helped me decide what I wanted to major in, which is sports management.
I would say my advice for future journalism students is just jump into it. Don't be nervous, because there's so many moving parts to it that you might not really have a handle on, but it's nothing to be nervous about. It's something to be really excited about, actually.
I would say to take risks. Taking risks is probably my biggest piece of advice and to really continue through the program, because there really are so many opportunities that doing journalism and working with Westboro TV have opened up to me.
I would tell them to step outside of their comfort zone. I did the same when I was put into the journalism class. It wasn't one of my first choices, but it really gave me a good community and way to be creative and write and talk about things that are important to me. So for anyone looking to get involved, definitely step outside of your comfort zone. It's really worth it.
Thanks for tuning into this week's segment.
Make sure to follow our Instagram and TikTok at Lobby underscore Observer for more.
This is Ben Sahana Karthik.
And Grace Bridges.
Reporting for the Lobby Observer from Studio 33 at Westboro TV.
So as you can see, we're really proud of our programming and our students. I have to give a huge shout out to the staff at Westboro TV, Karen and Aiden and Tim. I really see them as part of our school community, and we couldn't do without them and their expertise. They've really created a wonderful partnership for really like getting three free teachers every day as they come down and work with our students. Also, Jess Conradt and Sue Smith have really embraced this new collaboration, and I asked them to do crazy things, and they do them. And the kids are stepping up, and we're just really proud of them and what we're doing with the journalism program.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's a very, very cool partnership that we've created. And I think Westboro and you can be really proud of the high school and, and your staff. You know, Chris really embracing it, and then, like he said, Jess and Sue, working with those students. It's just a really neat thing for me to see, obviously take a lot of pride in our schools, but I think it's something that really helps us stand out. You know, we're always trying to look at what other high schools are doing, and you know, like are we, how are we compared to them, and how can we do better? And I love it when I feel like, oh, we've got this. You know, people should be looking at our program to see the way we work with those students at the high school teachers and Westboro TV kind of collaboratively. So I'm so proud of those kids, and I love, I loved hearing from the students who have gone on to college and are reflecting back on their experiences. You know, we had many more videos we didn't end up using, just time-wise. But it was really neat to hear them talking about the skills that they learned, you know, not just in video editing, but in being able to tell a story and, you know, what's involved with that, and all the different elements you can use to tell a story through video that really gives you, you know, whether it's the video, the interviews, the audio you can put in there, voiceovers, text on the screen. You know, it's just a really rich way to tell a story, and I think we've given our students a lot in that regard. No matter what they want to do, whether they're going into journalism or, or not, they have to be able to tell a good story, and I think we've really given them a lot of those skills. So unless you have something else, I'm going to talk about the funding for one second, just because sometimes people will say, well, how are you funded? Or they think we're a town department. We mentioned we're a nonprofit. We're funded by the cable companies in town. So the way it works, and this came from the F C C, is that when cable companies want to come into your town, in our case, it's Verizon and Charter, they have to sign a contract with the town in order for them to be able to offer cable in town. So the town has engaged Verizon and Charter in that way over the years, and we, a certain percentage of their gross annual revenue is what funds Westboro TV. So that money comes directly to us. And of course, you realize that over the past several years, there's been a lot of kind of the cord-cutting and people switching from cable to streaming. And we don't get any of the revenues from streaming. So every time someone gets rid of cable, it's not because they're not watching anything anymore. They've shifted over to streaming that, and, and we get no funding from that. So you will be hearing about and see, there'll probably be an article on the Springs Town Warrant, looking for the town to, to help fund kind of that gap that exists in our budget from revenue and expenses because of that drop in revenue. So we hope we can count on your support for that, but we will be looking for a little bit of town funding going forward.
Yep. So in conclusion, I'm just so proud to work in a town that has Westboro TV and the school committee's support and such wonderful students working. But if you have any questions for us or comments, like this is the opportunity, if you want to learn anything more about journalism, hopefully the packages kind of gave you a good synopsis, but we're more than welcome to hear those, and we thank you for your time today.
Our turn?
Your turn.
No more videos.
Any questions?
Just ask one quick question, and apologies if you had mentioned this, but can you talk about the demand of the program? And if there are kids that are looking to get in that currently aren't able, or if everybody that has interest has been accommodated so far?
Yeah, so it's an elective, so it's a semester elective Journalism One. If they aren't able to fit that in their schedule due to, you know, arts or whatever else they're taking, they can do the Lobby Observer and do that after school and be part of that social media team. The intro level is one semester, and then the Journalism Two and Advanced Journalism are full-year Level Four electives. And they go to Westboro TV during class time, so it's not like an external, we, we work it into their schedule, that they're able to work on packages maybe every other day. We have kids coming in and out, depending on their workload and what packages they're putting together. But it's, I mean, if they want to stay after school, we love that. But it's built into the curriculum that they are able to do that work during the day.
Awesome, thank you. And then I'll just add one comment that I do know that there are efforts at the state level to potentially change in the way that organizations like this would be funded. So hopefully there'll be some movement there, too. But thank you.
Absolutely. If I, if I could, Steve, make a comment about that. Right? Okay. Just that, that's a streaming bill that is being put, put forward again. We've gone at this a couple of different times now at the state level, and it has not gone through yet. But, but that would shift some of the funding, you know, right now it's funded by cable gross annual revenues, and it would shift it to streaming companies, again, just shifting the funding with the viewing habits. So we're hopeful. We've just refiled that legislation. You might get an email from me asking if you will, you will write to our, to our legislators to have them support. But I am happy to report that Representative Kane, Donahue, and Senator Moore have all been very supportive and have co-sponsored that, that bill in the past. And, you know, takes a few times sometimes to get it through, but our legislators are very supportive, which is great. Thank you. Thanks for mentioning that.
Could I jump in on one, one thing really quick, just in response to Tim's question? One of the things that was left on the kind of cutting room floor in our internal budget process before we got to you was expansion of some journalism classes. So we do believe there is...
I wasn't going to mention that.
Well, that's my job. You know, I think there is certainly opportunity to expand and kind of reach more kids in the event down the road that we have, we are in a position to fund those types of programs. So, you know, I would love to see that happen down the road.
Thank you so much for coming, and thanks for the presentation. Watching the videos was really heartening to see what all work is being done. I will see, I absolutely love the work that Westboro TV does. I think that the possibilities are endless. I feel that it's a true reflection of what's happening in our town. It's so, it's town-centric, so all the changes that are happening are captured all the time. Anytime we need to send out messaging, whether it be for the schools or for the town, it's really a direct messaging system and gets to the people. And I think that, you know, that that's just priceless. In addition, everything that's, you're doing for the kids via the journalism program. And again, because there's endless possibilities, there's other collaborations that can happen in the future, depending on what the needs are at the time. So I really appreciate everything you're doing. My only question would be, what is the gap in funding that you guys are seeking or will be seeking?
Right. So we're in discussions right now with the town manager. We did go in front of the select board in December. The number that we were showing for this year at that time was about $180,000. So, but we are in discussions with the town manager, and there'll be a final number that will show up sometime in the next few weeks. I would imagine we're supposed to probably meet with her again next week to talk that through. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Steve? Thank you very much for the presentation. It's so exciting to see the wonderful things that, that you're, you're doing with Westboro TV and how you're collaborating with the students. I was hoping you could say more about the students in the Advanced Journalism course, especially the ones who, even beyond initially being attracted to journalism, decide that that's something that they want to pursue at the university level. Are they able to use the packages that they put together as part of their, their application portfolios?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, yep. We've had, have students use some of their packages for their supplemental applications for school.
Okay, that, yeah. That's great to hear. Thank you. Akul?
Thank you very much for the presentation and the videos that you put together. I, I can tell there is very good chemistry between the students and the Westboro TV, which is great. And I really appreciated seeing the graduates speaking about their past experience, seeing them younger and, and now, and they're proud of what they've done here. So I think that's a great certificate of quality of this program. A lot of questions, questions were already asked. I just have one. I'm curious. How many students participate in this, in this collaboration per semester?
Sure. So the class caps are 21, so we can only fit 21. So we have 19 in Journalism Two and 19 in Advanced Journalism. And then we have about, the Journalism One is semestral-y. We have about 55 kids in that over the course of the year. Thank you.
I think what might be valuable is to discuss the funding again, how it actually works, because town meeting can be confused in the sense that certain money's going to a pot, certain money's come back into a revolving fund, I assume, and then other pieces would be a direct vote by the, by the town meeting. So could you speak a little bit to how the thing started, how it was, how the finances function, how you get paid? And we already talked briefly about the shortfall and the hope, I guess, that town meeting would vote that. So.
Sure. So, so way back in the eighties, which some of you don't remember, but they do. But the F C C, when, when cable first came to be, and all of a sudden you went from the little antenna ears on your television to cable, the F C C said, okay, we can do this, but we want to make sure that we retain a local voice. You know, there was some amount of fear that cable would come in, and all of a sudden you'd eliminate that local voice. So one of the things, it's a very simple way of putting it, but one of the things that they put into that was the understanding that as cable came to town, the town could enter into an agreement with those companies before they can enter, because what they're doing is they're using our public rights of way. So their wires are going telephone pole to telephone pole through town and our public rights of way. And so the understanding was, you can do that, which connects you to all sorts of people who can pay you a lot of money for cable, but we're going to take a small amount of that and give towns the option of having a local access station, which would keep a spot for that local voice, for local community producers and what the town really wants for, for its residents. So that when the town, many towns will do this, which is why across Massachusetts and across the country even, you'll find local access. And so the town enters into this agreement, this contract, and it says in there, what percent of gross annual revenues, up to 5%, that's the max that you can get, of the gross annual revenues for the residents in your town. And the town then negotiates that through the Cable Advisory Committee here in town, and they come to an agreement on what will the cable company give us for a percent of their gross annual revenue and some amount of grant funding for capital expenses. And so those contracts are fixed with Verizon and Charter. We're actually in the middle of a charter negotiation right now. And that is funding that will, will fund us going forward. The problem we have is no matter how kind of rich you can make those contracts... The problem we have is no matter how kind of rich you can make those contracts, with subscriber numbers going down significantly, your, their gross annual revenues of those cable companies is also dropping. The cable companies are a little bit less sad about that because what happens is usually people, if they drop cable, move over to their streaming services. So some of those cable companies are offering streaming services and they still get money. But none of that funding again comes to us.
So the first pot of money being these contracts, where does it go? Does it go into the treasury of the town?
No, so it comes direct to Westboro TV and that's an agreement we've had with the town since, well, since we were incorporated in 2004 as a nonprofit. But then the latest sign over for that was 2013, our agreement with the town, which says those funds will go to Westboro TV in exchange for them providing cable-related services. So those funds come directly to us. There is a pass-through that we vote at town meetings, you're probably referencing that a bit, where there's an enterprise fund, but the money doesn't actually ever touch, if you will, the town. So the town approves a budget number, but the money never actually touches the town. They just, for accounting purposes, needed to have that. What some towns had done was collect the cable money from these cable companies over the years and they would give a little bit to their local access station and they would use the rest of it to maybe pay for insurance or, and so the DOR at the state level said, no, 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 those monies have to be used for cable-related services. And so now they make you put it through this enterprise fund, even though the funds don't have to touch the town. Some towns, they go into the town and then the town pays local access. Here, they just come direct to us.
So that's the accounting purpose to know what's going on?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question about the, the budget shortfall. I just did a quick search and it appears that, that at least looking at Charter Spectrum, their profits have actually gone up despite losing customers. And so if it's based on their, let's say, net revenue-
It's only based on their cable revenues.
Their streaming services have gone up, yeah.
So if they're selling services of streaming-
Right. And we don't get that.
You don't see that.
Okay.
Always the game, isn't it?
That's where our, our revenue is just continuously, the, the graph is not pretty.
And is there any-
And we've done a really good job about keeping our expenses down, I would have to say. I give a lot of kudos to my board of directors, but we really have kept those expenses very, very tight over the years. But at some point, there's, there's nowhere else you can squeeze money from and as the expenses go up, even if they're reasonable and revenues go down, you end up with a gap that's bigger than, you know, what you'd like to see. You know, in any given year, you might say, okay, our budget's going to go up 4% or 5%. Well, if your revenue is also dropping out, then all of a sudden the gap is more like 8, 9, 10%. So it's problematic.
In the negotiations for the contract, is there no way to build in a provision, even though they're not required, but there's no way to negotiate profits or percentages from the streaming?
Correct.
That's what the legislative bill that's being introduced is hoping to do.
Very clever to pick that up.
Right? So yes, we are.
Anybody else? Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Allison?
Sure. Last item on the superintendent's update tonight is that I have some great news. And it relates to some funding that came through for our middle school robotics program. We've had robotics at the middle school for a number of years now and they were using these Lego Mindstorm kits that had slowly become slightly obsolete. Now, you know, in, like any good robotics and engineering program, the folks in charge and the kids took the opportunity to try and troubleshoot and do some workarounds and work with some aging equipment, but really these things were kind of getting to the end of their usable life. And thankfully, the folks at the Turkey Trot, which is a great kind of organization and a great event, have contributed $20,000 toward the robotics program, which is going to allow for the purchase of kind of the new, new fangled version of the, the kind of Lego products that they've worked with, which are a great sort of entree point for kids. It's a class that almost all kids take, from what I understand, it's universal, and really introduces them to sort of problem solving, the sort of basics of coding and things like that, that can set the stage for learning on into high school. So big thank you to the Turkey Trot and we will either now or later in the session, if you choose, vote to, I'd appreciate a vote to accept the donation from the Turkey Trot.
Very good. The next item discussion is the ZEV policy, revision 1218 of 24. Ben?
Is there a USB cable here?
I'm going to put the slides up and then you give me a nod and I'll advance them. How's that?
Our clicker's on the fritz.
Yeah. The manual, the wink instead of a clicker.
Subtle chin nod.
Got to get my cheaters on here. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am Pete Dunbeck, the Chair of Sustainable Westboro. Jeff Levine is the head of our Drive Green Subcommittee and has been driving the ZEV policy. And I think you may know Ben Bowers and, and Patrick Welsh, who are also key members of the, of the ZEV effort. And Ben is the Sustainability Coordinator for the town. Again, thank you for the chance to present to you tonight. As we were preparing for the discussion tonight, it became clear to me that it would be very beneficial if we could have a regular cadence of updates like this to the school committee. These updates would ensure that we stay in sync and that you are fully aware of what we're doing in areas that may impact the schools. And, and I'm not saying like weekly or, you know, every meeting, but, but like every six months or something, some sort of a check-in process. And, and I'd encourage that to be considered. The goal of the ZEV policy, as I believe you all know, is to obtain Climate Leader certification. This program is a, can you, not yet, please. Can you, this is a state program that helps municipalities implement climate action plan like ours. It's really the next generation of the Green Communities Program and it provides both funding and technical assistance to municipalities. We're going to go through some discussion of the grant opportunities, then discuss the requirements for climate leaders, of which ZEV is one of the requirements, and the ZEV policy specifics. Okay, thank you. And then, Westboro has received over $717,000 of green community grants since our designation in 2019. In green communities, we compete for a piece of annual statewide pool of funds of about $11 million. We have 297 other municipalities that are competing for that money. Climate Leaders Program has been funded with $60 million for the next three years, so therefore $20 million is about twice as much as green communities. It's also important to note that the climate leaders will be competing with many fewer municipalities for this pool of funds. As of today, no municipality's been certified as a climate leader. However, 19 have submitted for climate leader certification paperwork as in the December round. And our expectation is that there'll be about 50 climate leader communities when we attain that status. Therefore, we have a much higher chance of winning grants and also larger grants with the new program. And I think it's quite reasonable to expect that Westboro can get grant monies totaling about $1 million or more over the first two or three years. However, climate leaders does not eliminate the opportunity to continue to compete for green communities grants. I'm drilling down a little on Westboro's experience with green communities. Westboro has leveraged green communities funds and utility incentives to complete $855,000 of energy efficiency projects. Based on analysis by the Energy Service Company recommended by the state, these projects were, which were completed without any Westboro taxpayer investments, are saving Westboro over $136,000 a year on utilities on an ongoing basis. As you can see, the school district has been a primary beneficiary of these green communities projects. I'd also like to address some of the comments that I've received, in particular one from Sarah last night. Ben Bowers, with the assistance of various town departments, provide an annual report to D O E R to ensure we remain a green community in good standing and grants are only awarded to these communities. When we get a grant award, D O E R sends a contract to the town, which includes the Ts and Cs for obtaining the funding and the obligations of the town. These contracts are reviewed by town staff and if needed, the town council gets involved before execution. As we and our service providers complete our obligations, the state disperses the funds to us. We rely on the town administration to review and approve these agreements, but I can't imagine that any green community contract will allow the state to clawback funds that were dispersed for work completed under a signed agreement. So I'm not particularly worried about the clawback question you had, you had asked about. Next slide. We have, we as a town have had many other successes in any energy efficiency projects. Some of these projects have been completed with or by Sustainable Westboro, but many have been done without. In fact, all of town government has been involved in making changes that lower our energy use and our greenhouse gas reductions, emissions. This is an all-in effort and, and this is the only way we will make meaningful progress in implementing Westboro's Climate Action Plan. Next slide. These are the five requirements for climate leaders certification. We've already met two of these requirements. Sustainable Westboro is the type of committee they are looking for and the Westboro Climate Action Plan demonstrates the town's commitments to decarbonization. There is a, a project underway on planning the municipal decarbonization. We obtained grant fundee for technical support to support that effort and we're on track to complete that work in April or May. And that would also require a return to this committee and the Select Board for approval when the document is ready. Of course, we're here to talk about the ZEV policy and then the specialized code is the final requirement. This is an overlay on the stretch energy code. It does impact school buildings, but it only applies to new construction. So it's, it's limited. The stretch code applies to much more, but the specialized code only applies to new construction. This is a bylaw change and therefore requires town meeting approval. So far, 48 towns have, have approved this and I think that's indicative of the interest in climate leaders, because I think it's one of the reasons people are adopting this Next slide. So before we get into the details of the policy, I'd like to state some overarching things. We've been working the D O E R in the creation of this document. We wanted to get their understanding and their guidance and, and specific language and stuff that is reflected in the document you've received. We didn't want to go through the process of getting school committee and Select Board approval, only to send it to D O E R and have them say it doesn't meet any of the requirements. So we're working between the state and the two town approval bodies. We did get preliminary reviews and, and help from D O E R in the creation of the document. We believe this document is, is really a best effort pledge by the town to make decisions in the method as prescribed. This does not create any specific obligation to spend money. D O E R, in fact, includes the term practicable in the language of the guideline, which to us means that we maintain all physical, fiscal decision-making on our existing processes, whether it's town meeting, Select Board, School Committee. We need to decide, we get to decide how to spend our money. However, they will be watching. We have annual reports to them, just like Ben does now. We're going to have to continue those annual reports. And if they see us not following our ZEV policy, if we flaunt it, if every, every request gets accepted and becomes an exception, they can kick us out. It's, it's, we have to meet their expectations. It's a new program. It's hard to predict exactly where the gray lines are, but we're working with them to try to make sure that we're successful in this. Furthermore, if D O E R definitions of exempt vehicles change in a way that the school committee or the Select Board feel they no longer can state with integrity that they support the ZEV policy, you as the approving authorities can vote to unapprove the policy and it becomes not a policy in effect in town anymore. D O E R would then not consider us a climate leader community in good standing and it would shut off, pretty likely shut off all of our eligibility for any future grants or support. But those, that decision doesn't need to be made in the hypothetical. It could be made when certain lines get crossed and you feel uncomfortable or the town can no longer support the policy as approved. And we'd also potentially have experience in the benefits side, in the things that I've implied in the first slides in regard to benefits. Could either be substantiated or maybe, maybe they don't materialize. But there's no, those, those can be made in the, in the tangible circumstance in the future if, if in fact, you believe that the ZEV policy can no longer be supported. So in other words, Westboro contains, retains all the fiscal controls, but we will need to meet D O E R's expectation if we want to continue to get the benefits. Earlier, I suggested that Sustainable Westboro and, and Ben Bowers would like to have a regular cadence of updates with the school committee, such as every six months. These updates can be the vehicle for providing you the visibility to the changing interpretations and guidelines and, and stuff, so that it won't kind of like suddenly creep in. And so I think we need to, we owe it to you to be transparent in, in what's going on. We can't expect you to know all the nuance of criterion four of some green community document. So we owe it to you to that visibility and we'd like to come back and make sure that that happens. So I'd like to go to the next slide and Jeff is going to take over.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Levine. I'd like to first start off by telling you a little bit, just briefly, about the goals of our zero emission vehicle policy. First of all, as Pete said, one of the requirements of the policy, of the, of the climate leader program is to have such a policy. But also our intent is to reduce the greenhouse gases within the town of Westboro by having a policy like this that guides the town on vehicle purchases. Goal is to establish an electric-first purchasing priority. The, the policy establishes the guidance of maximum use of grants for the purchasing of vehicles and identifies what exempt, what vehicles are exempt from the requirements. Also to set standards for what are exceptions to the policy. And also the policy is intended to replace an existing policy within the town of Westboro. We have a policy today, established in 2018, for fuel, fuel-efficient vehicles, which already references D O E R's criteria for, so we're already under a guidance of D O E R criteria for today. This policy will replace that existing policy. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the scope and, and description of what's in the policy. First and foremost, it is, it covers municipal and school vehicles. It tells us to update the inventory of vehicles within the town annually, something that we are already- we are already doing as a member of green communities, so that's nothing new. It establishes a battery-electric-first preference, so it sets the standard that new vehicles should be, if at all possible, battery-electric. If that is not appropriate for the application, then the next preferred vehicle is a plug-in hybrid. Following that, a standard hybrid. And if all else fails, if none of those are appropriate for the application, then a standard internal combustion vehicle is the next alternative. It establishes exceptions, how exceptions are to be handled. Kristi Williams provided this section for us. She felt it provided sufficient guide rails without being overly onerous. It establishes the fuel efficiency requirements for the cases where we do go to, a standard internal combustion engine, what the fuel efficiency should be by referencing criterion four. As I said, we already do that today. There's nothing new about that. It references criteria for what vehicles are exempt from the policy entirely. And as our 2018 policy already does, it establishes, it really just repeats the state law for anti-idling. Today, it's a separate addendum. In 2018 policy, it's a separate addendum. We've now incorporated it directly into the policy, but it's the same as the state law, is the same as Westboro's already following today. So what we'd like to do now is take you to the policy. We have two versions of the policy, one with change bars, so you can see what it looks like in comparison to the version you guys originally looked at, voted on, had some comments on, and then we've got a clean version. What I'd like to do is focus on the significant changes. There are some changes in here which are really just clerical, and there are a couple of changes that are more substantive. So I'd like to get to the substantive ones, and afterwards, if there are other things that you want me to come back to and look at, be more than happy to do that. So up front here, in the background section, we clarified that the policy applies not just to non-exempt, but there is a small section on exempt vehicles, so we clarified that, that it applies to all vehicles, municipal and school fleet. So scrolling down further, stop here if you would please. Under the applicability section, school committee commented that, on the first time through, we had this section talking about including future vehicles. You were not quite happy with that. I understand why, and we have changed that. So it simply now says the policy applies to all municipal and school vehicles, period. So we'll scroll down further, if you would please. Keep going. That's just clerical. And keep going right there in Section C, exempt vehicles. This is where the substantive change occurs, and it's really, other than the area above where I talked about the change that you guys asked for, this is the only substantive, really substantive changes that were made in here, and this whole section on exempt vehicles. And what we've done here, it became clear to us that what we had here before was duplicative of what was in DOER's criterion four. And we found that we were, if we left what we had before, when criteria four changed, we'd have to make similar change, and it would be a maintenance complication to have to keep in sync with criterion four. And I'll give you an example. DOER exempted police cruisers because there were no all-electric police cruisers that were possible, that were capable. So they had a date, off the top of my head, I'm going to say it was September of, oh, it's up, it's in there? Yep, July of '25. Well, I think even before that, it may have been, I could be wrong, July of '24. And then they delayed it a year. So we changed the policy and delayed it a year, and then now they've delayed it again. So rather than chasing the changes that they made, we changed, we deleted the details of the exempt section and simply referenced criterion four here. We also kept in this section that we've put in that exempts third-party providers to the town. We continue to say that they are exempt from the policy. This is really the substantive changes that we have made. If you go down further, I don't think there are really others. If you go down to like the appendix, you'll see changes here, but they are of the same vein. So for example, here in the exempt vehicles section, it looks like there's a big change, but really, all we've done is reference criterion four, so it's the exact same change. So if you would put up for me, please, the clean version of the same thing, just so you can see, it's a little, and scroll down if you would to the exemption, right there, Section C. It's a little bit more, it's a lot more readable now, rather than trying to read all those change bars. You can read more clearly what's going on here. It simply says that references criterion four, and then has that additional exemption that we have put in that says third-party providers to the town are also exempt.
So thank you for your attention, and we'll be happy to take questions and further clarify or Tim?
And thank you both for the presentation. Just a few questions. To start, Pete, I know that you had said that there is $60 million in the Climate Leaders' Fund over the next three years. Do we have any indication of what that will look like after the three years expire?
DOER has not made any announcements beyond the three years. The history of green communities is that it has a rolling fund, and they keep replenishing it. There's no guarantee that it'll be the same amount. In the green communities, the first communities that adopted green communities, when there were fewer competitors, got greater amount of funds than the ones that came in later. So there is some benefit to going early, because the pot stays about the same, but you get more competitors if the green communities' history replays in this.
Yes, thank you. And then are you able to comment at all on the current adoption in town of municipal vehicles that are electric?
In the slide that I went over quickly that had the long list, four battery-electric vehicles, the police chief's admin vehicle, and three other town admin vehicles. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's like conservation, border health, and three admin vehicles there, Chevy Equinox are the other three. The first was a Ford Mach-E.
Thank you. And then my final question would be, do you see challenge?
Excuse me. And then in addition, there's 10 hybrid police cruisers, and there's other hybrids, so kind of like in the third tier of the stack. To my knowledge, we don't have any plug-in hybrids. Animal control officer is the fourth admin vehicle.
Thank you. And then my final question, do you potentially see there being any challenges to departments adopting electric vehicles without there being a centralized plan in place, such as the ZED policy?
I think it is helpful to have the policy in that it creates guidance for department heads as they're putting plans together. We have, as I tried to imply on the slide that I put up there, the, many of the department heads have been very receptive and active in trying to adopt energy efficiency and climate-sensitive purchases whenever it can fit in their budgets and so forth. So the DPW director and the police chief have done it on their own without having a policy, but I think we could do it in a more clear way and maybe a more aggressive way.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, I have a question. This is under Section 5, Guidelines for Vehicle Procurement, and specifically about the exemptions. Exemption requests will be reviewed and approved by the capital expenditure committee? Is that the one authority for exemptions, then?
This is, again, the same policy we have in place today for exemptions to the fuel-efficient vehicle policy, and it's the one that the town manager, who is responsible for the purchasing of essentially all of the vehicles that are non-exempt today.
Not true. School committee buys its own equipment.
And do you follow the capital procurement process that the town has set up?
Historically, they come out of the school budget.
There's a capital planning.
In other words, it's not a capital line item that goes as an annual warrant article.
So the vehicles purchased by the school are not part of capital planning, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the way it's been.
That's something I was unaware of. It may be worth looking at the review and approval process, because it was written with the, basically, it was language that was developed by Kristi, and consistent with the process that's in place today.
Anyway, that's the way it is today.
How many vehicles does the school purchase or own?
We have six, of which three are vehicles that might be applied by this policy. The others are trailers, small tractor, things like that. So there's three that might apply, of which one of those three would be exempt based on its weight. And so there's a fairly large difference in time, so I would say in the near term, the school probably would only be looking to purchase one vehicle.
Okay. I was aware the Sugar Shack, I believe, has got a vehicle that's used, was the only one I was aware of. And then Ben has an inventory that we're reporting to green communities, and we, I...
Other vehicles on your list?
Okay. I was just on...
All the other ones are listed.
I was just unaware that they were on his list. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just, without any further clarification on that, I would worry that, as written here, the policy would be in contravention to current policy as we understand it.
And in the policy you're referring to?
As it's written here, it says exemption requests will be reviewed and approved by the capital expenditure committee. But if I understand correctly, currently, when the school department procures a vehicle, it requires no approval by the capital expenditure committee. Is that correct?
In the sense that capital expenditure committee reviews articles. By purchasing a vehicle from the school, with the school budget, there wouldn't be an article. It would be funded, if you will, out of the school budget, just like the maintenance of those vehicles is funded by the budget.
Okay. Well, the thing that maybe is a work item we need to follow up on is the fuel-efficient vehicle policy that's in place says that something very similar to this, and that was approved by the school committee eight years ago, whatever.
I don't know that it was. There has been no approval in the sense of what the policy has been, in part because there's no, has been no need for it, because the vehicles have already been in the fleet.
Okay.
So to the extent that in this time period, we needed a new vehicle, the school committee certainly would have discussed what we needed to do with the town manager.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, we're not out here all by ourselves, but there are issues associated with sovereignty of the ability of the school committee to conduct its business as authorized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under general laws.
So the purpose...
To the extent that any of these things tie our hands and require us to buy something that is not cost-effective in order to satisfy something, we are responsible for our budget as voted by town meeting, and to the extent that any of these things happen outside of the budget process, so that an unknown expense occurs, that means something will be taken away from the kids and the school system. Granted, in our budget, a new vehicle isn't a big piece, but we know how much money that is, and that could be potentially half of somebody's salary. So the idea that we just do these things because it's a great thing to do, every time we make an expenditure on anything, we review it for its cost-effectiveness.
That's good. Should be done.
Because we have to, because we have to come in with a balanced budget at the end of the year. And I can tell you one town that didn't, and it was hell to pay for years. Anyway, that's a perspective, if you will, in the way we review these things.
So... Yaku?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions. How many municipal cars in town would be impacted by this policy if it was in place?
Ben would know the numbers better than I.
I believe there's 146 vehicles owned by the town. Granted, some of them are like I just explained, vehicles that are called vehicles, but they're trailers or something like that. But the total list, I believe, is 146.
Yeah, a great deal of, a great quantity of them are exempt, police cars and so forth. So I don't know the number. We'll get the number.
Anyway, that's the other magnitude of what that list holds.
Do you have a kind of a projection into what kind of charging infrastructure would be required to be in place to support that fleet of electric cars?
I guess the answer in part is I don't even know the number of vehicles, so how would I know the number, what charging infrastructure? I'll reference the DPW, the recent purchase of three admin vehicles. That was done with a plan to build charging stations at the DPW building, and that, there were grant monies that were attained for that charging infrastructure that offset the majority of that cost. So it is a plan for process that's needed, because yes, they need to be charged. It is, I mean, it's part of going to electric vehicles is, for the first two categories, the battery and the plug-in, you need a charging infrastructure.
Would that infrastructure require additional staff, or would it incur additional operational costs?
It doesn't require any staff that I don't think...
No, it doesn't require additional staff. There is some cost, but there are grants, and DPW is looking into that.
So if we sign the policy, let's say, next week, all the boards approve it, it takes effect the next day, and then we have to start looking for building the infrastructure, or not yet? What would be the process?
The policy is about replacement... The policy is about replacement of vehicles. So as we're replacing vehicles, we need to consider battery, electric, plug-in, so forth. And if the decisions are made to do plug-in or battery, there'd need to be consideration of EV charging for those, consistent with the number of vehicles getting purchased each year. So it's not like the next day, you throw away all your gasoline engine vehicles and, and convert the fleet. It'll take a long time by the time we go through a replacement cycle. And, and the replacement cycle, operational needs of those vehicles and the cost and the practicality of it is justified in their own vehicles purchased that require charging, you'd need charging infrastructure.
The four vehicles that were initially purchased were charged on 110 outlets, which is quite possible on overnight charging. So that was the initial approach before there were Level 2 chargers purchased. And we do have two town Level 2 chargers at the golf club, so that's also a viable approach. Installing Level 2 chargers is, is fairly easy and fairly inexpensive.
Thank you. I, I think you spoke a little bit about this. Could you, could you speak a little bit more to the fact, how would the DOER monitor adherence to this policy?
We have to provide data and an annual report.
On an annual basis?
Pardon me?
On an annual basis?
Yes. Annually, and any vehicles that get replaced are reported in that. And they review whether it's previously fuel efficient, and now they'll look at whether you've gone through the zero emission vehicle first. And part of the process being described here is to have a documented paper trail, if you have an exception, how you made the decision and why, so that we can justify our decisions.
Thank you. So under the current criteria for a, the cars that are under eight and a half thousand pounds are exempt. The policy just, just links to that, to that criteria. So under the current policy, it will not have any impact on, for instance, our, our bus fleet. I mean, even, we don't own the buses, and they are, they are provided by a third party, so they are excluded by virtue of that. But if that criteria changes in the future, how would, how, what would be the process of, of how would that information percolate to our board? You know, will we have a chance to review the policy?
I'll use the police cruiser example, because it's a real one versus a, the DOER had identified that the Michigan State Police Testing Lab had approved some police cruisers that were battery electric, and they were starting to come onto the market. And their prediction or their expectation was the prices and the availability would be sufficient that it should, police cruisers should no longer be exempt. And they, they started announcing those changes. They were like a year, 18 months advance notice. As the time went on, police chiefs were saying this isn't acceptable, and enough back pressure came onto the state, they delayed it, and then they, they withdrew it entirely. So now it's, there is no dated date available for when police cruisers are expected to be required. One of the points that that highlights is, this is a program for the state to achieve its climate goals by working with municipalities. And if they set up criteria that are unacceptable financially for municipalities, they won't go along with it, and they won't be successful. The municipalities won't go along with it, and the state won't be successful. So they have to find the right amount of pressure to put on municipalities to move them along. But if they put too much pressure, municipalities will say, we can't afford this, we're not going to do it. And that's what happened on the police cruiser.
Okay. Thank you. A few more questions. I, I participated in the, in the Sustainable Westboro Committee the first year of my term, and we were looking at the, at the electric buses grant. And back then, I, we were told that the towns that were less affluent were, were heavily prioritized in how those grants were given out. Is this the same with the Climate Leaders Program? Are they also giving extra points to those towns that are less affluent?
I have not seen that in any of the materials that has come out. I think it is appropriate for the state to, to be aware of communities that have greater needs and bias their programs accordingly. I haven't seen it in any of this climate leaders discussion.
Yeah. So, thank you. Two more questions.
Yep.
Actually, just one. It looks like out of the five criteria that are, two are met, three are still not met. And the biggest one, it seems to me, is the, is the specialized energy code adoption, because it will require a town meeting approval. I wonder if that should come first out of those criteria. And what would happen, for instance, if we, we approved this policy, but then that vote fails in town? Would you still advocate to keep that policy? Could we opt out at that point, since, since we would not have the potential benefits of, of, of the Climate Leader Grants?
I think it's a fair question. I do, if we've, I'll, I'll use Hopkinton as an example. They went to town meeting with the specialized code, failed, understood how they made a problem, what mistakes they made in preparation for the town meeting, corrected those issues, basically do more marketing and, and community education, went back to town meeting and passed the next time. So, A, I don't plan to go to town meeting without a high degree of confidence, and, but if, if I failed, we'd be back, you know? So what happens to the ZEV policy while we're working through the other two? I think it, we could mothball it, we could, I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is. I don't, I personally don't think there's that much burden in the ZEV policy because of the way it's structured as, as a best effort, and we have, we're not being asked, we're not asking departments to take on huge costs. In fact, and I talked to the finance leadership team, I forgot what it was called, Steve was in the meeting, I believe, and, and that oil I talked about. We need to come up with some value of how much carbon reduction is accommodated by each, each investment. You don't want to spend $100,000 for two pounds of carbon reduction, and nor do you want to reject a project because it's $1 over, more expensive, if it saves enough carbon emissions. So how do you get that balance point and how much? So I think we need to put some value numbers on, on carbon emissions and use that as a, as a guideline for making decisions on which projects are practicable.
Thank you. Last question, I already asked you that question last week when we met, but I think it would be for the benefit of the public to hear the answer. And given, given the current changes in the, in the federal government's support for these kind of programs, would, would this program be impacted by, by reduced funding in the future?
The, let me answer in parts. The electric vehicle program is part of the EPA. I think it's toast. I don't think there's going to be, the electric school bus program, it, it isn't going to survive the next four years, it's going to get pushed out and so forth. So I think the, it was the biggest driver of electric school bus adoption, not state funding. It was, it was the federal program, and I don't see it surviving. When you say this program, this program isn't about electric school buses, but I think the electric school bus thing is, is, is going to be mothballed for a while. Could be surprise, whatever. But there are changes the administration is putting forward to discontinue some of the EV funding. The, state has its own EV funding program and so forth. I see the EV market becoming more and more competitive anyway, because battery prices have come down. So I, I see it, it taking some of the steam out of EV adoption, and some of the cost benefit is going to get less benefit. You know, it's going to, the benefit's going to be there, but the, the costs are going to be higher. So I think it's going to slow down EV a little bit, but it's not going to be like the school bus. The, so, but it, it doesn't, whatever, the $60 million that was referenced on the slide and so forth, that is not, that's all state money. It's not, it's not federal money backed, it's taxpayer, Massachusetts taxpayer dollars or, or utility rate payer dollars. It's not federal money.
Thank you.
I have one technical question, and that is, who's maintaining the electric vehicles that the town already has? How, how are they being maintained? Who services them? Is there a new body hired to do that? Ben?
Yes.
Okay. Is this an existing employee or a new one?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, certainly the history of maintenance of vehicles of this type has been interesting when you read the, the ability, I guess, of organizations like ourselves to try to adapt technology from internal combustion engines to maintaining electric vehicles. So the, you know, that is certainly, as the fleet grows, a very important piece of this analysis. In terms of, I guess, the ability to rely on government to fund things, under the Biden administration, the IRA or the Inflation Reduction Act legislation, the town of Westboro took advantage of that and filed on behalf of, of the town to receive $1,800,000 change, plus or minus, for the installation of the geothermal system at Fails. Had we known about this earlier, we might have been able to also file for the solar installation. Anyway, we filed that early in December. Ashland was just behind us 20 days later. We got the $1,800,000, and it's in the bank for the town on behalf of the Fails structure. Ashland was denied this week by the new administration, and they canceled the opportunity. They'd spent $20,000 to get to the point where they could file only 20 days later than us. And that's the end of the game for them under the new administration. So the, you know, what can happen to these programs, obviously, is certainly an interest, i.e. by the legislature, and secondarily, the availability of the money to, to fund these things. And everything that I'm aware of is that there are other consequential costs that aren't obvious in this setup. For example, if we're now going to put in charging stations that are adequate to charge a vehicle in four or five hours, there's not only the cost to do that, but there's also the incremental cost to upgrade whatever the service is that feeds those chargers if they're all in one place. And it's not insignificant. When we had to do that for Fails, the project paid $400,000 for the, for the opportunity to quote, "deliver our energy back into the system." And that is something that we've been made aware of by National Grid for certain programs. And so the, the things that we're talking about, at least from the perspective of the school committee, have a cost impact for which, if we don't know what it is and we can't budget it, when we have to balance the budget at the end of the year, things have to be removed from the budget that we don't want to do. If we have to lay off teachers, if we have to reduce programs, these are the things that happen if we give control of our ability to control the budget to somebody else. And it's a great concern to me with what can happen politically in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I'm a very conservative person to protect the ability of the school system to deliver to the people what we promised at town meeting. That is my focus on what we're talking about here, as well as on articles that we presented at town meeting. So that's all I have to say tonight. I think our policy is for the committee individually to study the merits of what's been offered, do whatever research they need in time, and it's normally our policy that we would then take up the discussion and vote at the next meeting. So I thank you all. I know it's taken a lot of work to get where we are between Sustainable Westboro and the school committee. We've been talking about this since last May, I believe, was the first time around. Even though it's only a few pages worth of document, given the signature page has all five members of the school committee, all five members of the Board of Select, to me, that's a contract. And if you're going to sign a contract, you should not be willy nilly on the assumption that if you don't like it, you can back out. That doesn't ever work in the real world, so I think it's a consideration as well. So with that, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, and feel free to reach out if there's other questions or things that aren't clear to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we did put just a quick opportunity to check in about warrant articles and the upcoming budget summit. I'll give you a brief update about the budget summit. I sent a draft agenda around, and that is scheduled for January 30th. The school department budget will be first thing in the morning at nine o'clock. I'll be kind of walking through the budget development process, making sure that we kind of go through everything for our colleagues on the, on the Select Board and the Finance Committee, who I think, unlike yourselves, are, is sort of day to day tied into the goings on at school. And making sure that folks are really clear both about, you know, why we are kind of pursuing what we're pursuing and how we got there in terms of the process. In terms of warrant articles, a couple of quick updates for you. There is a warrant article in draft form, it's Article 4. And currently, as written, there's a placeholder amount. There's a kind of yellow highlighted spot up there, if you look, Daniel. There we are. Okay. And, you know, we've, we've had some sort of internal discussion, discussion with our municipal partners, just around the sort of overall climate, financial climate in town. You know, we have already talked about the purpose of establishing a special education reserve account, but just, you know, for review, for anyone watching, the, the notion is really to encourage a kind of a better budgeting process overall by creating a safety net that helps accommodate a part of the budget that is extremely unpredictable. So when it comes to out of district tuition and transportation, those numbers can swing quickly, and, and the school department then has to pivot in order to accommodate those increased costs. After some kind of discussion internally, we were thinking that the correct place to pitch the amount is at, at approximately the cost of a typical out of district placement at a collaborative for one student. This is a fairly minimal amount to sort of establish the fund, to kind of kick it off. It'd be about 75. It'd be about $75,000. So it's not a huge ask to the town. I, I think originally when we first started discussing this, we were thinking more on the scale of $500,000, which is about what it costs for two out of district placements in private school plus transportation, which would be a bigger safety net, really. But I think for the purposes of right now, we really feel like establishing the structure is the most important thing. And once that structure is established, then the town can vote on a consistent basis to continue to fund the reserve or expand the reserve up to the point where the town feels it's sufficient or allowable by law. Additionally, we have had some conversation internally about funding mechanisms down the road. How would this fund be fed? And, you know, we have mentioned here before that Medicaid reimbursement is funding that is coming into the town through the kind of efforts of service providers, both on the municipal side and on the school side. Currently, all that fund goes into the town coffers. However, we really believe internally there's more we could do to sort of expand some of our reimbursement claiming. So we're hoping that an increase in revenue, if we can, if we can get there with an increase in revenue on our side, that that could be a mechanism down the road for supporting that. So we're really committed to, like our folks across the street, committed to like thinking about ways to growing our revenue sources so that we're continuing to contribute. So that's one article, and I'll pause there. Nice.
I just wanted to ask that you explain the Medicare reimbursement program so that people understand that the effort to collect that money is done by the school department and our staff, and you can pick it up from there.
Sure. Yeah, I'm going to correct myself. Medicaid, not Medicare, excuse me. So I'm going to give you very broad strokes because it's not my area of expertise. The person I'd need to kind of call up here is Sherri Stevens, who's our Student Services Director. But essentially, various service providers in the school system, so our speech and language pathologists, psychologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, the provision of services within the schools qualifies us for reimbursement through Medicaid. And the workload really falls to those service providers in terms of documentation of the service and submitting their time. And we do that through kind of a collaboration between our Student Services Office and the Business Office on, I think, a quarterly basis. So we submit quarterly and then funds come back directly to the town on that basis.
I'll stop you there. It goes to the town in some form and it ends up as a free cash
Yes.
contribution to the budget, which means that the, the town gets to use the free cash, that component of free cash, for whatever purpose they want. On the other hand, since it's the labor of both the people that we pay and our staff to get that money back from the federal government, and if we didn't do it, the town wouldn't get it. So the point here is that in fact, rather than it go to free cash, that it goes into the stabilization fund, for which the text is in the article, so that in fact, if we ran into a problem where we had, let's say in the middle of the year, the necessity to send a special needs kid somewhere for, for their education under state law, that in fact, we could still have a resource that would help balance the budget for that unknown. And be aware that some of these outsourced students are very, very expensive, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so just one event like that could really unbalance the budget. And in the past, we had some mechanisms that we could use, but because of what was discussed by Allison, which is there's some very quirky ways that money comes back to the town. For example, if an event, if a given year had a surplus relative to these accounts, relative to refunds, we wouldn't see that money for another year. On the other hand, if a year like happened last year where that income dropped by a large percentage, we have to make it up in our request for money from the town. And that's exactly what's going to happen to us when we go to the town meeting this year. And so this is a fix that could be useful. We've, we've tried to retain that money in the school budget in the past, but were voted down. But because of the uncertainty and the way all these things work when you're depending upon state refunds, we need to protect ourselves. And by the way, when I mentioned earlier, a town in the Commonwealth that ended without a balanced budget, it took them three years, act of the legislature to give them money to run their town for one more year when that happened. It was the town of Winchton. So these things can happen as, as inflation continues, you know, the cost of doing business, we need to protect the ability of the school department to balance its budget without impacting the town directly. And this would be a way to do that. Sorry to take your thunder.
No, no, it's great.
It's so important that we figure this out.
Carry on. And I do think, just to remind folks of the drivers, you know, the cost of out of district tuition really ratcheted up significantly over the arc of the past two years. There was a 14.7, I believe, increase in FY '24, almost 5% in FY '25. So this is, you know, extraordinary cost increase, and that's just the tuition side. Secondarily, transportation all over the place is increasing. And, you know, thirdly, some of the way the billing has happened from those very same schools, it's not an all inclusive price. So some of the additional service provisions at those schools, such as the ones we were just talking about that we do internally, speech and OT and PT are billed separately. So the, the kind of full freight cost of education can be very high. And I do want to say, I, I'm really committed to the notion that, you know, we are, you know, ethically, morally, and legally obligated to make sure we are providing an appropriate education for every child. And I'm committed to that proposition. And the, the trick is how do we find a way to budget so we can do that and do that, do that wholeheartedly and also maintain kind of quality programs and services within the district? So.
If I could just add one thing, I think the presentation of this article will give a good opportunity to actually talk about those out of district costs.
Yes.
I think most people are not aware of how high they can be. And I think when you first presented this, you mentioned that you've seen that solution in different districts. Are you aware of our benchmark towns, if they're using some similar solution?
It's a great question, and it's certainly something we can find out before we bring it to town meeting. You know, I'm coming from Westward where this was in a very important part of how we thought about kind of budgeting. And, you know, to be honest, what it does is it provides us a means to budget and assume a little more risk in the budget process. So we're not budgeting for worst case sort of scenario, right? And that way kind of keep our costs projections more realistic. In this community, I feel like that's even more important because our budget cycle is so early. Sometimes it really does feel like we've, you know, we've got to have a crystal ball and look way into the future. And this, this would be a really helpful mechanism for allowing us to do that more thoughtfully and, you know, frankly, try our best to control costs, you know?
Tim?
No comments on the sign, but thank you.
Thank you.
No, no comments.
No comments.
I hope we are successful because it will solve some problems. I guess I'll just add a, a note. One of the things that we've done as a school district versus others is create programs within the school system that meet generally the needs of our special needs kids. Borough program with a candy store is one of the examples of, of having done that so we can keep those kids training in our school system. Likewise, with other programs that we've developed. And we, by virtue of that, have not seen the kinds of extreme problems until recently in terms of cost impact on the budget. So there's a lot of moving parts, I guess, to this system and, you know, we try to do the best we can to figure out ways to solve old and new problems as well.
Absolutely. And that reminded me, we are doing that analysis Tim had asked for a little while ago. I'll have that for you at the next meeting, and I'll be sending it out prior to that so you have it. In terms of, you know, overall, our estimated cost savings based on the borough. You know, I think there's a, a really strong theory of action here, which is an investment in high quality programming in the district has really allowed for cost savings in the sense that we are not spending as much on out of district tuition as other communities are. Our percentages are low, and I think that's, that is a good working model. I think we should try our best to stick with that because we have a lot more control over what happens here than if we end up having to send many students out. Plus, it keeps students in their home community, and I think that's what we want.
That's true. Certainly the parents whose children are engaged at the Borough program in the beginning were very happy about the idea that their kids were close by.
Yes.
Rather than wherever they have to go. I think we have somebody that went to Idaho, didn't they? Anyway, way out west, and you can imagine what it costs just to move them back and forth, plus the services they receive on the other end. We have another article too, do we not?
We do. You know, and we spoke briefly about the Capitol article related to the chiller replacement at Mill Pond. It's currently an article, I want to say, hold on.
70 grand, 60 grand, excuse me.
60, 60 grand. I was just trying to find the number. And I can't find it right now. But, you know, one of the questions that came up at the Capitol Expenditures Committee was related to whether the district would consider pursuing an alternative to a chiller and specifically kind of heat pump as a replacement as part of a kind of move toward more sustainable systems. And, you know, one of the things on this article, we're in design phase, so in some conversation that we had, we, we wanted to add a line to the end of the article. So currently it reads, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $60,000 or such amount as town meeting may approve for the purpose of funding the design for Mill Pond chiller replacement, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action thereon." And we would like to add, "A cost benefit analysis of design replacement options will be included in the design report to establish the basis of design effort." So really trying to ensure that we're kind of assuring the town, we will look at viable alternatives. We always want to be thinking about both the short and long term cost savings of any project that we're doing and, and, you know, particularly if that project has other sort of benefits. So we'll certainly do our homework and look into that in the process. If you're comfortable with that, I would make that amendment.
Yes, I am, and I'll tell you why. We have been questioned. Certainly, we try to be as transparent in what we do, both in the district as well as what we talk about when we go to town meeting and all the discussions that happened beforehand. And this question about, well, how do you know what you're doing is the right thing? Generally, when you're repairing an old system, that old system has, has unique pieces to it. And so an in kind replacement is likely to be less expensive than any other solution. But because the question's been asked and the, the general knowledge of these kinds of systems is, is not well distributed, we'll answer that question technically in the report and follow up on whatever the outcome of that is for the least cost, most benefit approach. And we have considered that in every project that has been brought forward by the school committee to the town at town meeting. And generally, we've been very successful with those projects in the sense that once we start them, with proper management of them, we've never overrun what the town has given us for money to build the project. As a matter of fact, on the Fails school, for which we spoke earlier about the geothermal system and the solar system, we have no current bill for heat or electricity. We earn money on that system, and we probably avoided a cost of heating and, heating the building, because that's what we used to do, somewhere in the order of $140,000, $160,000 a year. So all things in, it's turned out to be a very good opportunity. And as I mentioned earlier, we got back a million eight on the basis of the IRA program that the federal government put in. And I don't remember whether I mentioned it, but what Ashland is losing is three and a half million dollars on their program by virtue of the whimsy of the federal government. So anyway, that's the reason behind that particular added wording to satisfy those that want to know whether we've done the right thing or not when we spend the town's money. And the opportunity is with proper management, as I think we've demonstrated with other projects, that we do know how to manage this stuff and we use the right consultants to do it. So with that, if that's enough, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. I, you know, I support the amendment, but I'm curious, and, you know, this is a clarifying question. Would that mean that should this pass a town meeting with the amendment, the cost benefit analysis would only be done after the $60,000 has been
No.
approved? No.
We would want to include that as part of the
Oh, yeah. Further, design would know what they want to do before they start.
Okay. Thank you.
We're pretty confident that the, you know, whoever we hire to do that design work is going to have the relevant expertise to provide us with that information within, within that
Okay.
initial appropriation.
I guess a little added information, once we have the engineering done, the, the documents are developed so that we can go out and bid under state bid law to get the qualified company to supply this engineering design as the lowest bidder. And that's why proper management of that process is so important, because you have to pay attention every month as to what's going on, as we did with Fails. That's the reason why it came in a couple of million dollars less expensive than the town authorized. Good? Everybody happy? Okay. Let's move on.
Let's move on to the exciting business of the school calendar. So based on our conversation last time, we went back and made a few adjustments to, so I'm giving you three different options here. We made a few adjustments to the, what I'm calling the base model option. This is, you know, similar to last time, and I'll highlight the changes from last time. So first of all, there was just a technical error on the last calendar. We intended to kind of roll over the existing holidays and framework from last year to, to the upcoming year. The first draft I gave you, Good Friday, was listed as a full day as opposed to a half day. So I moved it back to the half day, which actually buys us back time at the end of the year. We looked at the early release stays in October and we made a move. So originally, we had one on Halloween and upon reflection, decided that that was, it was a day for parent conferences, actually. And we decided that was probably not going to be a productive day for parent teacher conferences. So we moved that up to the 17th, which also makes it a day that feeds into a three day weekend. So I think for parents, that feels like a, a nice move in that it consolidates some time together. The second full PD day, we looked at that. Originally, we had it on a Tuesday in March, and we are going to try something new, which is we backed it up to the Monday after February vacation. And again, the theory is twofold here. One is it extends, you know, possible vacation and travel time for our families. But in addition, I, I'm coming from a district where we did do professional development on a full day after a longer break. And I have to say, coming off of a break, educators are often coming into those days very refreshed and kind of ready for professional learning. So I think it's kind of a nice opportunity for both parents and educators. So that could work really well. We're willing to give it a shot if you have no formal objections. And then also looking at kind of consolidating and moving things And then, also looking at kind of consolidating and moving things around in March, we shifted some dates in order to try and achieve a few more full weeks where possible, so we, we made those shifts as well. And lastly, we moved one of the days in May because of prom. Traditionally, the half day in May, we've tried to align it with prom because the reality of prom is, there are many, many requests by students to leave school early that day for various getting-ready-for-prom-type activities. And so, this is an opportunity for us to, you know, help support all the students in, you know, their social needs, and also get some professional development done at the same time, so. So those are the, the switches there. The totality of that has us ending school on the 16th of June, and that's with no snow days. If we go out the full five snow days, that takes us to the 24th. So that's kind of the base model. If we want to look at next two things, I did pull attendance data to kind of try and look at the reality of what happens on days that are just adjacent to either, either a sort of lone day in the calendar or a vacation. The best data was actually from this year, January 1st and 2nd, the two days back from vacation. And while teacher attendance was pretty stable, fairly typical, I do have to say, our student attendance on January 2nd was, was low, notably low, about double the amount of absences that we normally have. And it improved slightly on the Friday on January 3rd. You know, it kind of depends on which way you want to present it. The pessimistic version would say there were 12% of our students absent on January 2nd. The optimistic version is 88% of our students were present, so it wasn't, you know, like half the school was gone, but, you know, there, that's a more significant number than, than on a typical day, for sure. On other sort of one-off days, like I looked at, for example, the November Monday before Election Day, sort of sandwiched in between a day off, not actually an overly high spike in absenteeism among either our students or our staff on those days. And I looked back a few years. I couldn't find a time in the last five years where we had a longer holiday with a day on either end, except for just this past year. So that's the data I had to work with. Given that, I am showing you a couple of options. This one is the version where instead of coming in for the 22nd and a half day on the 23rd of school, we would take those days off, so. And what that does at the end of the year is it bumps us out two days to the final day of school being on June 18th. So that's, that's one possibility. That's going to put a lot of pressure on me around snow days, because if I call one, it'll go, jump all the way to the next week, so. But educationally, I will say those final, that final day and a half before the winter break, sometimes people's focus is not as strong on those days, so. The third option would look at extending the vacation on the other side, so taking the day and a, you know, attending the day and a half in December, and then removing January 2nd from the school calendar and extending the vacation on that end. And that has us out of school on the 17th, and then snow days bump us over to the next week unless we can keep it to just one. So, a couple of options to bat around and discuss, and I think these are all viable I think educationally, if you ask me what I think is the strongest, it's probably option
What would you like us to do with these?
Well, it is yours decision to vote the calendar, so...
I know. But usually, we post it, and perhaps we could have a two-step process, which is, we offer tonight what the committee would consider to be the, the most viable.
Okay.
Allow you to post it as being considered for a vote by the school committee, which then allows us to get comments from people who are the ones that actually have to deal with this, and their kids, and where they are and what they all think. So I think in, in the past, we figured out how to do that, but given the fact, now we have three. So, any comments, I guess, on the three?
I've got a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I actually have just a couple of clarifications. I think that there's, and this is just clerical, so, and it's confusing me, but, so you've got on, for example, the third option, you've got highlighted on the calendar, the 17th of June is the last day, but then you also have highlighted the 6/16?
That is just a clerical error.
Clerical, right? Okay, so that's actually done on another couple of, I think there was some, another version on which that's done, where there's a little mistake. But also then, so is it the 24th or is it the 25th in this version that would be, we'd be taken to after the fifth snow day, because you've got highlighted both? So if you see, on that third iteration you have, so see where in the calendar it says the 25th is highlighted?
The 25th of...
Oh, sorry, June, my apologies.
Oh, yes.
Last day of school, sorry.
So the 17th?
Last day of school, last day of school if we had five snow days.
Right.
But then in the center, you see that the 24th is highlighted?
Yes, that's, that's the same clerical error.
Which one is...
It'd be the 25th.
It would be the 25th.
Yeah, that's the five days.
Okay, super. You know, my personal thoughts are, I think that for this year, and again, this is something that is going to change because the, based on when, what the dates are, so every year this is going to be different, specifically regarding the winter break. I, I do think that it's probably wise that, for purposes of what you've shown in the second iteration... Hold on, I just want to make sure I'm talking about the right one here. Is it, so it's not, okay, so in the second one, you've actually not taken out the Friday, so it's, and you're saying that that you believe to be the more viable option?
Educationally.
Educationally?
I, I think that educationally, when, when we get students back from the breaks, they are usually on, on it. So just from a strictly educator point of view, I think the, taking the 22nd and the 23rd...
Is more beneficial.
It makes more sense. People are tired, it's dark, they're ready for a break by that point. You know, do, will we likely see an attendance impact on that Friday? Probably.
Yeah. So, I mean, just on the face of it, I would have thought that that would be more, you know, make more sense, but based on the attendance data that you've pulled, saying that, you know, a day like that, you haven't seen a huge drop in attendance for either the staff or the students, then I guess I would, I would favor either one of those calendars, and certainly defer to you in what you believe to be more educationally sound. So, yes.
Just one question, well, one comment and one question. I liked, I liked the, the full PD day after the, the February break. I think that's, I think that's smart. I haven't had the chance to do the math. How do these drafts compare in terms of full weeks in school?
We, we think we got at least two, if not three additional full weeks into this draft versus the last time. And that was by making that shift in March, and then there was the other one in October. Yeah.
Just to follow up on that, I had counted them earlier today.
Thank you.
And I'm forgetting, but I want to say, is it 18, or do we know that number?
I don't know.
I don't know it off the top of my head.
All right, I had counted it.
Yeah, we had it last time.
Okay. But that's what it had come out to, I believe.
We were very explicitly looking at making that shift, and there were, you know, the initial draft had only one full week in March, and now there are two. It had only, in October had a similar switch, so we, we bought back at least two and I think three weeks in there somewhere.
Okay. So I guess to get somewhere, I would suggest that school committee offer draft version two as the strongest educational, and post it on, on the school's website for the public and parents and students to review, and comment back to the committee for our next meeting, so we can discuss it with that information as well.
Great.
Yeah, and one other thing, Allison, I want to say, I really appreciate how thoughtful this calendar is. I'm looking at how much thought was put into the placement of after vacation, before vacation in March, the way that you structured it. So, really appreciate the way that that, those things were consolidated, so we can get more weeks and also give people an extra day on a long weekend where it'll be useful.
I do have a question. In, in your opinion, which would you consider to be the more educationally productive day? January 2nd or December 22nd?
January 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd make a motion that we present it that way. What's the will of the committee? How many are in favor of offering to the public to review draft version two? Well, I'm giving you a chance to yea or nay. Okay.
Can we, I can make a comment. Can we have some more time before...
Oh yeah, we're going to have more time. It's just that we need to put something out there.
We obligated to put something today?
No, not necessarily. We have a whole year to decide, although the parents won't be happy if that's what we do.
I'm, I'm not sure in the past that we've put the draft, like a single draft up. I think there's been debate and then feedback. I'm just, just a point of clarification. I mean, we've only put, in my recollection, is, once we voted, the final draft, the final version. So there's debates like this, versions come forward, and we don't push anything out to the general public, but we let them react to the discussion that's happening here, and you...
Well, let me ask, what would be the concern if we did it the way it was, I've just suggested?
I can express it? I'm, I'm not sure. I'm convinced that this is the best draft, personally. I would like more time to analyze it.
Okay, we can wait until next time, or time after that, whatever it turns out to be. But the later we do this, the more concerned the parents are going to be. What are you going to do? Because the whole issue is for parents to figure out what they're going to do with the kids when they have a vacation. We've heard that before.
Yeah, I would, you know, I feel personally comfortable with, with bringing one forward, but I understand Yaku's concern. I would certainly think that we should have it posted by the next meeting. I, I don't think that we should be pushing this out further than that, because I do think that there's a lot of planning involved, and that takes us into February, so.
Okay, well, if that's the approach, then we have the three you need to study, because it should be one of those three. And then we can discuss it some more next time, hopefully pick one.
So I would like to propose that we take all three, take this time to study them, and then have a vote at our next session based on one of the, you know, one of the three.
Yeah, and I'll second that, so it will be a vote. All those in favor of that approach?
One question. I'm sorry. That means we will have to pick one of these three?
Yeah.
So there's no, well, maybe, I mean, so there is no alternative? We're now leaving ourselves an alternative?
Well, let me suggest this, then. In the interim, that you meet with Allison and Daniel and prevent, present what you want to consider, which means you got to draft one up with the same complexity. Maybe, maybe Daniel can give you the spreadsheet.
I mean, unless there's anything specific that we can address, you know, so that it's addressed in one of the versions. But if it's something more of just, I figured if you need more time to review them, this will give you that opportunity. I would imagine you'd land on one of them, unless there's something drastically different, which, you know, I think that at this time, point in the school year, for the 2026 calendar, 2026, 2020, no, 2025, 2026 calendar, I don't think that, you know, we should be proposing any, any drastic changes.
No, but I give you the opportunity to, to offer to Daniel and Allison what you think your version would be, and we could consider that as well. Or, after you've done a lot of work, you pick one of these two, or three.
That's fine.
All right, so that's the plan. All those in favor of the plan? All right, 500, thank you. Okay, next order of business tonight is citizens' requests. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak to the, come on up. And so you'll hear the spiel, and which is policy, generally it follows that state law.
Before we begin, we will remind everyone of the school committee policy regarding citizens' requests. You must be a current resident of Westboro. Speakers are allowed to address the school committee about issues within the school committee's purview. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. You are welcome to hand the chair additional comments in writing now, or send them via email, and the chair will share them with the other school committee members. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise during or following a speaker is not allowed. At the close of citizens' requests, school, school administrators may address what was shared by the speakers if they wish to do so. State your name, your full name, please, and your street address. Speak directly into the microphone.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Christian Hedrick. I'm at 38 Glenn Street, and I currently have two children who attend Armstrong Elementary. I'm here this evening to address a concern regarding the proposed public school calendar that we just discussed here, the 2025-26 calendar. My concern began with the school committee's decision at its January 31st, 2024 meeting to reduce the Good Friday holiday from a full day to a half day. While I'm not against adding holidays to the calendar, I am against taking away established holidays, namely, one of the most important and solemn Christian holy days that remains on the calendar. I encourage you to reconsider this decision for future, for the future calendar. There's no way to tell, I imagine, how many people of any given religious group celebrates which holidays, but based upon the recent additions, it seems that whenever there's a request, a holiday is added. If that is the strategy, that's fine, but why must it be at the expense of other significant local religious traditions? There are more than five Christian churches in Westboro, clearly indicating a significant Christian presence in the town. What is most concerning, I think, is that it seems that Christianity has been singled out here. Why was Good Friday chosen to be reduced to a half day? Who is to say Good Friday won't be removed altogether in upcoming calendar revisions if no one speaks up for it? Additionally, as a parent, I am concerned that the school year has become fragmented by all these new holidays and all the half-days. As it stands right now, there are merely 17 full weeks of school out of some 44 this academic year. And although I've not done the research, something tells me that all these interruptions can't possibly be beneficial or productive for the learning environment. If the reduction of holidays is the goal, I might suggest you look to a more common and efficient model many businesses follow. Everyone gives up their holidays and observe federal holidays only, while allowing those who celebrate holidays beyond those a reasonable time off as necessary, instead of pausing the entire school system for a holiday only some families celebrate. Once again, I encourage you to reconsider how decisions are made with regard to holidays for the future calendar. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next item, school committee reports. Tim?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Yeah?
So, just wanted to follow up on basically what Allison had stated earlier about the Martin Luther King Day celebration. I think that it was really wonderful. I had a chance to attend with, you know, in collaboration with Westboro Connects, which does wonderful things for the community. I think that, so they had given me the opportunity amongst, with, with many others, actually, to train to be a facilitator, which they had, you know, conducted these trainings about six months back, it's as part of their bridging differences initiative. And they were able to have us, you know, model this at the, at the celebration by putting us at individual tables with, you know, where we were hoping for a diverse, you know, diversity at the table in terms of where people were coming from and their backgrounds, et cetera. So they tried to put something like that together. I thought it was really successful. As Allison mentioned, you got to learn a lot about other folks and the types of struggles that they are having, and I thought it was a very successful event. I think that it's something that we... I think that it's something that we should take even to the kids in some fashion if we're able to. This facilitator model was very, was a very, I think it's very productive, and I think that it's a, it's a good learning experience and would be very beneficial for the student population as well, so.
Thank you.
Nothing to report tonight.
Yakub?
Nothing to report.
And mine already was given, which is the fact that we got the full $1,008,000 that we had asked for from the federal government in regards to the return rebate, if you will, for work done at, at failed school on the geothermal system. So glad we did what we did as soon as we did because everybody else is out of luck. Goodbye. So with that, we can move on to our action items. Did you want to, did you have anything to say about...
I can do a quick, a couple of quick descriptions. So first of all, we have two very generous donations from a family here in Westboro, and I'm not going to get name pronunciations right because I don't know them personally, but Heidi Rehm and Stefan Worwosik. And if you're out there, Heidi and Stefan, and I butchered your names, I'm going to apologize upfront. But wonderful funding targeted to our High School Stars program as well as the high school track team in the amount of $5,000 each. So I thought that was an extraordinary thing, and we wanted to really highlight that generosity. And you'll see, you saw the letters from Principal Callahan acknowledging those funds. The second thing, a quick overview, and there's a typo on the, on the agenda. This is my fault because I had a misunderstanding, but we had a $20,000 donation from the Turkey Trot. It's just a contribution from the Turkey Trot. This is not actually a grant award. I got thrown off because we actually had applied for a grant, but in hearing about this need, the Turkey Trot sort of swooped in and made the $20,000 donation. So the special thank you goes to Turkey Trot for $20,000 for our robotics program at the middle school.
So I would move that we accept as a school committee with great appreciation the three grants that were offered to the town for use by the school committee for those uses defined in the gift.
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, 5-0-0. Thank you. With that, we have minutes to do of the 8th of January.
I move to approve the minutes of January 8th, 2024.
And I'll note that this is one of the things that happens in January. It's not '24, but '25.
'25.
So far, I've only done that once.
Yeah.
So that's a second, excuse me, that's a motion. Is there a second?
And I'll second.
Thank you very much, Tim. All those in favor? Aye, 5-0-0. And with that, we complete our business of the evening, and so I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Very good. Thank you all. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
See you again.